Welcome to the April 13th, 2023 Parma City School District Board of Education Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Ms. Nusio.
Mrs. Brats.
Present.
Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Ruda.
Present.
Mrs. Schwark.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting? And if there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed.
Yes, we will.
Thank you, sir. And before we get going, I just have a little couple remarks here. And I'd rather do it to the audience than empty chairs. So good evening. Welcome to the meetings. Appreciate to see all these bodies here. We are sitting on the precipice of changing the face of Parma City Schools. Voting in a positive manner on May 2nd will ensure we provide our students with a building that will be a source of pride, one that will provide maximum number of academic opportunities, provide an area in which to learn utilizing 21st century technology, and increase safety. This plan receives, will receive a $71.9 million booze from the state. This plan has been strongly supported by the leadership of the community, namely Parma Mayor Tim DeGeeter and Parma Heights Mayor Marie Gallo. The mayor of Parma Heights expressed her community's support during a recent town hall meeting at the Parma Heights Library. Sorry, I lost my spot. We also received proclamation support from the city of Parma, council members via 10 to 0 vote in favor of the bond. All of these actions are greatly appreciated. It is the greatest amount of support and energy of any plan the district has presented in recent years. Each of our board members has strong ties to the district. Three are lifetime residents. They and their children have graduated from this district. I personally taught for over 20 years in the system while all my children graduated from Normandy. I believe that I speak for all of us on the board, that we chose to be on the board to do what is best, what is right for our students and for our communities. We aim to promote opportunities from the district students, provide support and assistance for all staff, provide a physically responsible and efficient district. This plan is excellent for the community and even better for the students. Progress is waiting. Be part of the growth of the community. Let's make this happen. Let's once again be the pride of Northeast Ohio. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on, man, let's go. All right, well, I guess that bombed. All right, so, thank you. So, Dr. Smiley, do you have some things for us today?
We certainly do. It is really a joy to see so many smiling faces in our audience today, and we have a lot of students to recognize for their accomplishments. We're actually going to start today with our Career Tech winners. And before we do, first I wanted to thank Ms. Plageman for her leadership. We have 17 Career Tech programs in our district, and so with each one, there are certainly many different requirements and details that she always stays abreast of, and we're extremely grateful for her leadership. And not only does she lead Career Tech, but she has other areas of her responsibilities and her role, which she also performs at a very high level, and she's a true asset to our district, and we're thrilled to have her here tonight to help us present. We also are very grateful for our teachers. Career Tech teachers are really unique in that they have very specific licensers that allow them to do this. Many of them have very extensive life experiences in what they teach, and that lends to the passion that they bring to the classroom each day. And I certainly didn't talk to all of our folks, and so I don't want to portray it that way, but just talking to a few of our teachers, our Career Tech teachers, as they went into this competition season, and really the time and effort outside of the normal class that they invested into making sure their students were best prepared was extremely impressive to me. These are folks who are really willing to be almost 24 hours a day, seven days a week, making sure that our students are learning and prepared and can go to these different competitions and compete at the high level that they did. So I'm very grateful for our teachers for being here tonight, but more importantly, for what they bring to our classrooms and our students every day. I'm also grateful for our students. These are high honors that you're receiving. You have invested yourself in your program. It's always been our goal to make sure that when students leave here, when they leave our classrooms and our hallways, that they don't just have some type of broad idea of what they want, that they have industrial certifications, they have licenses, they have experiences in the field, or they have college credits. And quite frankly, you have all of those. You're going to have all of those by the time you leave us. So you have invested yourself in programs that really put you multiple steps ahead of your peers, and I really, I thank you for your dedication. Finally, the parents certainly, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for your support of our Parma schools. Thank you for your support of our students and your children. Without your support, without your investment in them, certainly we wouldn't have the success stories that we have to share tonight. So thank you to all who have come for the celebration tonight, and we'll turn it over to Ms. Plageman, who's going to eventually turn it over to our teachers, but she'll say a few words first.
Thank you, Dr. Smiley, for those kind words. I am Kristin Plageman, and I oversee the current technical education programs at the Parma City School District. This is always an exciting time of the year where we get to recognize our students in their leadership events at the state level. We'll have more recognitions when we get to May because we have some students that are still competing at the state level. So first, I'm going to start out with our BPA and Educators Rising students. Mrs. Swinger is our department chair at Parma Senior High, and she will be presenting those awards. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to start off with Mr. Aiden O'Connell in first place in payroll accounting, and he's going to be attending Nationals in Anaheim in two weeks. Very proud of Aiden. Excellent. Good job. And Emily Sannabria will come up next. She is third place in Advanced Office Systems and Procedures. Sorry. And for honorable mention, Malak Al Azarik. I do not think Malak is here. Honorable mention, Brian Boucher in Integrated Office Systems. He was at a tennis match, so I don't think he's here. Next, Antonio Cabrera, Financial Analyst Team. I know he's at Cleveland State taking an accounting class right now. Caleb Bartram, I don't see Caleb. Allison Tansick is here, honorable mention, Financial Analyst Team. And next, I don't believe Kayden Zakhar, he was also on the team. Blessen Williams, Administrative Support Team. I did not see her here. Sierra Catrill, honorable mention, Administrative Support Team. Lenny Keelis and Jordan Rupp, I know they could not make it. Steven Tran just texted me, he cannot make it for Basic Office Systems. I see Mr. Davion Cook, honorable mention, Banking and Finance. And Mr. Genzel Cologne, honorable mention, Personal Financial Management. And next, I don't believe Kayden Zakhar, he was also on the team. Blessen Williams, Administrative Support Team. I did not see her here. Sierra Catrill, honorable mention, Administrative Support Team. Lenny Keelis and Jordan Rupp, I know they could not make it. Steven Tran just texted me, he cannot make it for Basic Office Systems. I see Mr. Davion Cook, honorable mention, Banking and Finance. And this is the rest of our BPA winners. Do you want your picture? Our next awards will be for our Teacher Professions Program at Parma Senior High, and Mrs. Swinger will be presenting those awards tonight. Okay, and Mrs. Wozniak, I'm reading this off my phone. She wanted to let you know that it was with a heavy heart that she could not attend tonight, but the following students, Stacy Bruce, Celeste Dambiggi, Destiny Han, Katie Harkeen Baltono, if you would please come up here. They were led by Stacy Bruce. These students prepared a beautiful chapter display which represented the Parma City School District with creativity and class. They placed second in the state, and this was the highest ranking. And there is Katie. And we also have, I saw Kami Lehman, please come up, and Aiden Genzel with Teaching Professions. They created teacher materials using learning targets and materials from the classroom and received a bronze medal. They're both here. Kami, I'm going to give yours, congratulations, Aiden, I'm going to give yours. And finally, Aiden, if you stand right over here, I'm going to give you one. And finally, Bailey Kennedy and Ryan Whitten. Either of them are here. They made an interactive bulletin board based on the game of life, and they earned a bronze medal. So let's congratulate Bailey and Ryan. I'm sorry.
You collecting change?
And a gift from Mark for the community's establishment. And now we'll be recognizing our CMM Cooperative Marketing Management students that are participated in the state-level DECO. Ms. Carolyn Holt-Balas, the instructor, is here to present their awards. Thank you.
Valley Forge had 15 kids go to state and seven placed in the top 12. Callie Amato is working, she's my barista at Starbucks. She created a drink in the marketing campaign product. She's a national qualifier. Celine Graham, she is fourth place, national qualifier. I'm in a co-op program, so most of my kids are working. Shane Warden, he placed fifth in Personal Financial Literacy, and all three of them are national qualifiers. Costa Carateris, he plays 12th, he's on the tennis team, so he's out playing tennis tonight. He was in an integrative marketing campaign. And Aino Hi-C, he was an English second language student, and he did a presentation, he placed 10th, and he did a presentation in hospitality and tourism, professional selling of, selling technology to an amusement park out in Europe that he knew of. So he was unable to come to. And the two people I do have here is Allison Tansack, I shared her with BPA this year, and she placed 12th in the Independent Business Plan. She wrote a 20-page paper on her innovative app that she created for healthcare. And then Alex Turco placed ninth in financial consulting, and he did a project for Citizen Bank, and he had to create different places to do, because they wanted to get rid of the brick and mortar stores of Citizen Bank. And so he did financial consulting on what kind of options their clients can have to get services for that new bank, for that bank. So he placed ninth, so congratulations to him.
He also quote, finished first in high school beers.
I think Carolyn's just jealous.
Our final group is our Culinary Program, which competed in the state Pro-Start competition. Chef Gibbons and Chef Johnson are present today to present their awards.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and recognize a great group of ladies this evening. They've worked their butts off the past three or four months to practice on a weekly basis. They were asked to create a three-course menu, an appetizer, an on-train dessert, cost this menu out, set up a kitchen with just two butane burners, and cook that menu within an hour. So they've done a fantastic job. They traveled to Columbus on March 14th to compete against 14 other schools, and they did a really fantastic job, and they'll be moving on to the first week of May, competing at Washington DC at the national level against 46 other states. So can't say enough about how proud of this group I am. They just actually finished a practice before we came here, so they've been working their butts off, so we're going to recognize these ladies this evening.
Jordan Mitchell.
One more note about Omni, she also was recognized as the top life skills in the state of Ohio, so she also was awarded with that recognition along with an additional scholarship. And she's also going to be attending Johnson &amp; Wilson this fall, and she's earned full scholarships, two attended Johnson &amp; Wilson.
And Catherine Scheitzow.
It is socially appropriate to leave at this time. Certainly more than welcome to stay, but we do have a couple more presentations, and if you would like to excuse yourselves before we begin, we certainly understand.
No, don't go away.
Next, we're going to call up actually our Hillside Leadership Team. They will be first this evening for our Culture of Achievement Presentations and our Parent Supporters of the Year. We turn it over to Ms. Kabinski and Mrs. Cook.
Okay, I'm not even going to pretend that I can reach that, so I'm just going to pull that down here. Before I get started, I just wanted to say I'm so proud of all the former Hillside Tigers that are here tonight from the high schools. Congratulations, guys. You make me very proud. So tonight, myself and Mrs. Kabinski, the Assistant Principal, are going to honor some of our fabulous Hillside Tigers that make our jobs so easy every day. So as I call your name, I'm going to have you come up. All right, so first, Charlie Desko. Come on up, Charlie. Charlie was the top grade level ELA score on the Ohio State test, as well as earning the top grade level math score as well on the OST. I asked the teachers who have all the students to kind of tell me what they thought about their students. So this is coming from the teachers that all these kids have. We are very lucky to have Charlie Desko as a Hillside Tiger this school year. Charlie is one of our fifth-grade student council representatives and has volunteered his time to raise money for his fellow students. Charlie excels in all academic areas and is always eager to participate in class discussions. It is very rare that you will find Charlie without a book hidden amongst his belongings. He is an avid reader, hard worker, and model student. Most importantly, Charlie is a kind person and a good friend. He has a great sense of humor and is always willing to help others in need. Charlie definitely has a very bright future. Nice job, Charlie. Next, we have Mason Kozak. Mason is a top grade level score in math on MAP, which is our measure of academic progress testing. Mason is a quick learner that completes assignments, classwork, and any enrichment activities efficiently and correctly. He is often the first to solve challenge questions and strives to learn new things. He is great at participating in class and welcomes any challenges he is presented with. Congratulations, Mason, on your academic achievements and successful future. And next, we have Addison Messich. Addison was also a top grade level ELA score on the MAP test. Addison's ability to comprehend and rationalize text is incredibly insightful. Her ability to creatively write and vividly describe makes the reader of her work feel as though they are reading a novel. Her ELA class loves when she shares her writing because she is always bringing such a diverse perspective to the discussion. She is very intuitive as well as articulate in the manner in which she writes her assignments. Addison writes with ease and for pure enjoyment. Addison's expansive vocabulary that she weaves into her work is so exciting to read. My hope is that someday we will be reading her work in a professional manner. Congratulations to such an amazingly talented young lady. Nice job. Next, we have Elise Mack. She is a top level, grade level score in science on the Ohio State test last year. Elise Mack is the definition of an exemplary student. She truly exhibits all of the qualities that define this word. She works hard every day on her assignments and is a wonderful example for others to follow. Elise is always willing to help out her classmates if they need help and could undoubtedly teach her science class if Mr. Schleicher was ever absent. Elise is truly an amazing student. And next, we have Brendan White. Brendan is a top grade level scorer in ELA on the OST. Brendan's achievement on the OST does not come as a surprise. His critical thinking skills are impressive, allowing him to communicate his thoughts in meaningful classroom discussions. Brendan's writing is innovative and creative. He is always finding interesting facts that support his thesis statements and arguments. He is a model student to have in the classroom. Next, we have David Abda. David had a top grade level score in math on the Ohio State test. David's intelligence and drive caught teachers' attention early in the year. Seeing as he was already working ahead of his grade level, David moved quickly to seventh grade math as a sixth grader. He is currently excelling three levels ahead on the Alex program and scored in the 99th percentile on our district math MAP test. David is a leader both in and out of the classroom, working hard for his school through his membership and student council. David is a pleasure to have in class and will surely do great things in the future. And we have Colton Galgus next. Colton is a top grade level math scorer on the Ohio State test as well as on our MAP testing. Colton is an incredible leader both in and out of the classroom. He perseveres to rise to the top in understanding and connecting curriculum. His ability to think out of the box, to apply new ways of thinking and problem-solving is inspiring. Colton strives to achieve at the highest levels while being humble and helpful to those around him. Colton should be applauded for his efforts and know that he will excel as he continues through his educational career. All right, next, we have Madison Cornell. Madison is a top grade level scorer in ELA on Ohio State testing, top grade level score on ELA and math in MAP in the 98th and 99th percentile. Madison's ability to express herself both verbally and in writing is impressive. Her ability to communicate with other students is extremely commendable. She has an impressive passion for discussion and collaboration, as well as a tremendous enthusiasm for learning. Her passion to read, write, and learn is infectious. Madison is also conquering the world of math. Madison currently travels to Parma High School to take a high school math class. The way Madison moves through math content is refreshing. She thinks in novel ways to solve problems and is able to apply and problem-solve through challenging situations. It is no surprise that she excels and scores at the top of her class. Madison is truly an amazing young lady, and we cannot wait to see what is in store for her future. Yes. Okay. 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 Okay.
I'm not repeating that last name, sorry.
The what?
I'm not repeating that last name. Come on, it's far out.
Well, just don't do this. You were like this.
Not the one, not like me.
Thank you Hillside, we now have our Normandy friends to introduce.
That's good, that was a good one.
This is Urban, dealing with a family health issue this evening. So we have with us Mr. Gackman.
Hi, good evening everyone, thanks for being here. Really excited to honor our high achieving year. Mr. Gack is gonna handle 8th, 9th, and 10th grade.
Alright, thank you, thank you everyone for coming out tonight as well. Did we get disconnected, are we good there? Okay. Alright, I'm gonna start with our 8th grade achievers at Normandy. We have Leah Budoff and Peyton Scott. Leah has a 4.2 GPA through three quarters. I believe that's the highest GPA in 8th grade you can have. She plans to attend school in the future to become a video game designer as she's very artistic and enjoys storytelling. She really enjoys illustrating original characters and creating stories about these characters in her free time. Congratulations Leah. Peyton Scott is also one of our 8th grade high achievers. She is not here this evening as she's quite involved in gymnastics, but I'll still share a few things about Peyton. She has a 4.2 GPA as well through three quarters. She plans to attend college where she would like to continue with gymnastics and would work to become pediatrician or physician's assistant. Like I said, she's currently practicing this evening for a gymnastics competition coming up. She's a state champion in Level 3, 4, and 8, regional champion, and first-year Level 9 National Qualifier in gymnastics. So congratulations Peyton. Our 9th grade high achievers, Clark Aiken. Clark has a 4.5 GPA through three quarters this year. He is currently taking engineering courses at NHS to be accepted into an engineering-based college in the future. He's also a member of our cross-country and track teams. At Normandy and outside of school, enjoys snowboarding and volunteering when he can. Congratulations Clark. Ava Truman is our other 9th grade high achiever at Normandy. Ava has a 4.5 GPA as well through three quarters. She plans to attend Bowling Green and work in the medical field in the future. She enjoys reading fiction books, watching comedy and horror movies outside of school, and also likes spending time with her dog Zoe. And our 10th grade high achievers at Normandy, we have Michael Gorzen. He has a 4.7 GPA through three quarters. And he's looking forward to attending Cleveland State in the future. He would like to work in government or the field of technology in the future. He's also a member of the track team at Normandy and enjoys playing basketball outside of school. His favorite subjects are chemistry and history. Congratulations Michael. And Heidi Yanagawa. Heidi has a 4.7 GPA through three quarters as well. Heidi plans to attend college and major in environmental engineering. She's a member of the volleyball team and girls' cross-country team. She's also a member of the track team this season. And on the track team, she runs hurdle relays and broke the school record last year as a freshman. Congratulations Heidi.
Okay, for our first junior, we have Isabel Aiken. Come on down. Isabel has a 4.92 GPA through the first three quarters, plans to attend college and major in creative writing. She's a member of our National Honor Society, French Club. She's also a member of varsity volleyball, basketball, and softball. And she's an active member of the Girl Scouts of Northeast Ohio. Congratulations Isabel. Our other junior is Kyle Wells. Kyle, come on down. Kyle has a 4.85 GPA through three quarters. He met requirements to enter the National Merit Scholarship Program. He plans to attend college, he's not sure on his major yet. He's a member of National Honor Society, our junior class president and French Club president. Congratulations. And then our first senior, Jaylee Conrad. Come on down. 5.0 GPA through three quarters, plans to attend Ohio State or the University of Finley where she's already been accepted into their pharmacy program. She has also already completed her Associate of Science degree from Tri-C. She's a member of National Honor Society, key club treasurer, and an avid equestrian. Congratulations. Next we have Jace Kukral. Come on down. 4.9 GPA through three quarters, plans to attend Baldwin Wallace University to major in exercise science. He's a member of National Honor Society, serves on the Senior Advisory Board. He's co-captain for Boys Cross Country and captain of Boys Basketball. And he was also named the MVP for Boys Basketball this year. Congratulations. And finally, we have Morgan Tigalar. Come on down. 5.0 GPA through three quarters, plans to attend Ohio State and major in chemistry. Member of the National Honor Society, she's an active key club member. And she's also active in a service project called Empty Bowls. Very interesting, we talked today. So congratulations Morgan.
How do they get there? Weighted grades.
I know how they get it. It's still impressive.
That's all they take is APM.
All the time, yeah.
You can't give them anything else. Cause you have to take some. Right, yeah. Stuff that isn't weighted.
I think they took two of the class. And they were English class. British pros, why would they take British pros? I loved the class afterwards. Why do they take this?
Angela Rivey, come on down. She is an integral part. And Dawn Kuznick. Both integral parts of our Normandy PTSA. We couldn't do it without you. There's so much going on at Normandy. And these ladies are always there, always willing to lend a hand. And we just, again, appreciate everything that you do. Thank you for being a part of Invader Nation. We appreciate you.
Just also want to recognize the fact that Mrs. Rivey will actually be installed as the Ohio PTA President this weekend, which I really think is an amazing distinction. And I think she deserves a round of applause for that. Never known a president of the PTA for a state level, so I feel like we have a celebrity in our midst, which is awesome. She's also the PIE treasurer, which we sort of kinda twisted her arm into some years ago. PIE is our political action committee. So she is responsible for paying for all of the flyers that we send out and yard signs when we did that. So we're very grateful for the many different roles she plays. And Dawn Kuznick, I met on the first weekend, I think I was appointed to be superintendent. She was that involved then. She was at the first town hall meeting we have. And I think I've seen her at every Normandy band event that has ever existed since then. So thank you to both ladies for all of your service. Our Normandy friends, thank you very much for coming. Now is a very socially appropriate time to leave. Our seniors, I'm especially grateful for. I know you are booked solid this time of year, but we're grateful you took some time to celebrate with us this evening. Next, Mr. President, we have a presentation from our Curriculum Instruction Department. Dr. Stropko will represent us. Mrs. Zermet is here as well. This is, I believe, our last adoption for the year, is that correct? One more adoption. It's our penultimate adoption. We will talk tonight about student support materials and you'll learn more about our recommendation and our rationale for making such. Dr. Stropko.
Thank you, Dr. Stropko. Thank you, Dr. Smylek. Oh wow, long day. This is our time of the year where we do quite a few adoptions. Just to keep in mind, we spend about three quarters working with our teachers and making sure that we are following, one, board policy, two, administrative guidelines, and we continue to have that ongoing collaboration. Tonight, we're gonna talk about our early literacy plan, specifically at the elementary, our middle, our EL population, which is English learners, and then also some of our special ed programs as well at the elementary and middle. We always start with our goals. Increased student achievement is our main goal. I'm gonna highlight our two stars on our early literacy state report card. And you will hear not only the materials that we are hoping to adopt this evening, but also some of our plans and action steps that we've been working diligently over the last several months, certainly since we got our state report card. Improving transparency, we always involve our teachers. We always involve the community. We always put materials up for review if it's more of a core curriculum. And practice fiscal responsibility. We have a vision, we have a plan, and we have a rotation. And we have money allocated a year in advance for these adoptions that we're presenting this evening. So we're gonna talk a little bit about early literacy. You have this document in front of you. So the slide's in front of you. So on the left, you're gonna hear a lot about the science of reading. The science of reading is a buzzword from the state. However, it is how our students learn how to read. And it is that letter sound, letter name fluency. It is blending of sounds. It is vocabulary. It is reading passages fluently. And then once reading, that ultimate goal of reading comprehension. When we're talking about early literacy, we start with the letter sound, letter name fluency, and the blends, which ultimately get us to our goal of reading. And our kids take their first state test in 3rd grade. So you'll hear dyslexia law. There is a whole systematic process for how we identify early dyslexia, along with making sure that we have supports for our 3rd grade reading guarantee. Our 3rd graders have to score a competency score on that OST. They have two times with the Ohio State test. And then they have three other times with our benchmarks. And then additionally, our collective efficacy connected to our intentional skills. The best way that I can describe this is this is outside of core instruction. So what we are talking about this evening, our students are getting their normal English Language Arts block. They're getting their normal math, science, and social studies block. In a middle school schedule and an elementary schedule, we have about 30 to 40 minutes a day where our students either receive intervention, they receive at-grade-level support, or they receive enrichment. And so this is for our struggling readers that we have identified that may be at that basic or limited level. And we are gonna continue to pull out those skills that we're seeing deficits on in that core instruction of English Language Arts. And for this 30 to 40 minutes, we pull kids into the various groupings. They are not missing core instruction and we hone in on those skills. I was a T-ball coach at one point in my life when my kids were little. And the best way I could describe it is, I split the two groups in half and I'm modeling how to hit the ball. I'm modeling how to field it. I'm modeling how to catch. And there might be three kids that really have no clue how to field the ball. I'm gonna pull them off to the side at a certain point in that practice and I'm gonna really focus on fielding. So it's the same concept for reading. We're really gonna focus on those skills. And we call that guided practice. So again, I talked a lot about what's on this slide, which is your evidence-based early interventions priorities. So it's that early intensive phonemic awareness. It's that explicit instruction in phonics. So that letter sound, letter name fluency. And then once we have that skill set, we are reading for comprehension and we're connecting to text. We have 275 staff members in our district that are primarily K1, 2, and 3 teachers that have been trained in the science of reading. We have, our focus for our PIE time, which I talked about, was prevention, intervention, and enrichment. We have spent an entire year piloting this program that our Title I teachers use, which we use federal dollars to support our teacher staffing for this early intervention. So it is not out of the general fund. And then we also use federal dollars to help support our programming. And then again, that intentional instruction. This is a cone that we like to use and it's called tiers of instruction. By the end of the year, this is what a healthy cone should look like. So approximately 80% of our kids in high-performing districts, you will often see are at proficient. And then the rest are either in that Tier 2 or Tier 3 level. And so when we measure where our kids are at, we do that systematically three times a year, where we are looking to see what skills our students have and then we place them in groups appropriately. So we are constantly changing groups every six weeks. So we call this our tiers of intervention or tiers of instruction. So your core instruction, that's the green. That's what all kids get every single day. If our kids are in yellow and red, typically those are students that are in that intervention group and the skills that we have to continually reinforce or reteach. I'm gonna turn it over to Amy, who's gonna talk mainly about our Title I program that supports early literacy. And then she will turn it back to me and I will talk about our EL proposal as well.
Thank you, Dr. Stropko. As Dr. Stropko talked about, mainly we utilize Title I intervention in our elementary. We have a great amount of title teachers across all of our elementary buildings, the seven of them that are identified to be able to receive federal funding. So currently, out of the seven buildings, they all receive financial assistance due to usually the high percentages of low-income families. So that we know these students need extra support to meet those academic standards, as well as some family engagement opportunities to provide even more reinforcement to really help our students reach their potential. As I stated, this school year, we have seven of our eight elementary buildings that are identified as Title I schools. So they are housed with Title I teachers and help provide interventions for math and literacy. And then a lot of the family engagement opportunities that you see our schools doing, our Title I teachers provide additional ways to engage families to help them practice some of the skills that our students need for math and literacy at the elementary level. As we talked about, one of the nice things that we got to do this year with our Title I staff, since March of last year, we started the conversation about how can we help our students achieve even more with early literacy, as well as now that we have really gained an understanding about the science of reading or the ways that we best can reach those deficits that we know that we are seeing more and more as our kids come up through the grades. They provided time in March and we made a committee where each of the buildings had... where each of the buildings had representation. We utilized our lead Title I teacher, our lead school psychologist to help with a lot of the understanding of the effectiveness of interventions and the data involved so that we could be very systematic in our approaches. We also then selected a program based on that initial review, and we began our pilot this school year in four of our elementary buildings. Those buildings were Parma Park, Thrope Park, Densler, and Ridge Brook. And one of the things that we wanted to ensure is that we had a variety of buildings that had a variety of different students' needs. And it also allowed us to have perspective about what's working, what's not, so that we could have conversations with the whole Title I team. The program that I'm going to talk about is called Really Great Reading, and it also focuses on not just an overall program. It really hones in on the specific skills for early literacy, so that it's not a blanketed intervention. If the students are using their skills and they're lacking in a kindergarten-level phonics skill, they're provided that explicit intervention during a specific program. So in this case, we'll talk through the program's Countdown, Blast, and HD Word a little bit. But I want to emphasize that even if there's a grade level surrounding a program, the emphasis is on the skill of literacy. So you may find that we have students in the second and third-grade level that are functioning at early literacy skills that would be considered what they should have learned in kindergarten. So if it's labeled a kindergarten program, the kids don't know it's a kindergarten program. They know that they're working on those skills as a group. We utilize this during Pi time, as well as we also blanket extra support times in addition. So there are some kids who will receive specific interventions in Pi and then additional support even on top of that, outside of core. The process for the pilot, we utilize specific training. We did follow-ups. And our pilot buildings presented to our non-pilot buildings, which was very important so that our teachers could see what a day in the life using the intervention program, impact of the program, and tying it to our students' success. When we did a staff survey with the title group after their many presentations and discussions and actually had some teachers go watch other teachers actually using the intervention, we saw that the 90% said, "Let's go forward with this, and let's make sure that we give it a shot so that we can have our students have success." I wanted to highlight a couple of the data pieces because, like we talked about, we use benchmarking three times a year to determine if what we're doing is working and they're getting closer to the proficient level of what is expected of that student at that grade level. That information is key for making initial groupings. But one of the biggest things that we found that we were lacking in an intervention program was really drilling down the data to the specific early literacy skill. This program allowed us to see that if students were growing in not just phonics, but specific things within phonics, long vowels compared to can they read short vowels? Or can they read digraphs? That is important, and the difference between a blanketed intervention program that we may have used in the past because this allows us to stop, intervene, and see that they're progressing in their growth even if they're not hitting the benchmark yet, and your instruction can change. We saw that our students that were piloting this program, we were able to see that their mastery in those individual skills to become a reader improved greatly. We also saw that their vocabulary was improving. And what I mean by vocabulary is that things that you would think a kindergartner or a first grader would come in knowing, first, next, what's in the middle sound. They didn't understand even how to use those in terms of literacy, but also just class. And what our pilot teachers claimed was that it showed in all contents. They saw math teachers, seeing them being able to use some of the same skills that helped them in literacy be applied in the other content areas. And then the last thing that we saw is that though students, because their gap, they started up so large in our benchmark, they didn't reach green just yet, but you can see the trajectory of where now they're going to be able to connect it to the fluency and comprehension, which honestly is what we want to see so that it sustains and that when they get to the third-grade reading test, they can comprehend and not just read the passage. That is our Title I intervention program that we would want to utilize this. In addition, the other area that provides student support are elementary and middle special education small group classes. So much like Title I, this is utilized for students who have extreme deficits in, in this case, literacy that need specialized instruction, often outside the core, but sometimes it is a part of their core because it is their intervention specialist providing that extensive explicit instruction in literacy because their gaps are so large. This is a service we provide in all of our classroom settings so that our students have the best chance for success and get the most individualized attention. This incorporates students who may have educational disabilities that need that systematic approach. They do follow the general education classroom curriculum and then receive this explicit intervention so that it helps them be able to have extra practice in those skills, specifically that meet their goals. This program would be part of their ELO block and then as well as their intervention block. So getting to the program a little bit, and I'm just going to go over briefly, but one of the key things about this is it's hands-on. One of the things that we noticed our students, especially ones who struggle, they struggle with attention, and they struggle with being able to connect the sounds and letters. And research really has shown that you need to have kids doing multisensory approaches to be able to sustain their sounds and to be able to connect it then to reading. So that's what this program is about. This program is about being systematic, being hands-on. And so the pictures and things you see, each kid would receive a student letter tile kit. The colors are purposeful because they tie back to those sounds and where they are in words. It then moves in progression to skills that still are having kids do hands-on, but think of it more where when you read bigger words, you need to chunk it into sections. So that's why you'll see things like whiteboards that are in three little parts because they're breaking up a multi-syllabic word to make it easier to read and see the patterns. It also has a digital component. And the digital component provides that ability to practice in a systematic way so that the teacher can adjust instruction, and it's tied to where they are in their intervention program so that we also can use it in core class so that the classroom teacher can see where this student is. This, these set of programs, this phonics suite, is intended for students who have skill deficits in kindergarten, honestly, all the way through 12th grade. And how they make sure that it's developmentally appropriate is that if a sixth grader is using this, they have a workbook that's called the intermediate workbook. So you would see it a little bit different, and you wouldn't see pictures of, you know, cats and things in it. You're going to see a more age-appropriate, but they're still working on that skill because that's what that student needs. Everything about this program that the teachers and students find is that it's engaging as well. And that is something that, honestly, with intervention students, we need to ensure that they don't lose sight of the love of reading because it's difficult. I'm next going to turn it over to Dr. Stropko to talk about another cohort of students that are very important that need student support.
So with the changing of times, I'm going to give you a little bit of data. Last week, when I prepared this presentation, we had 660 EL students, K through 12, in our district. This week, we have 668. So our EL population continues to grow. I will share with you how our population has grown. We are so happy to accept EL students from eight to 14 different languages, depending on the school year and depending on what's going on in our country. So you will hear me say EL or ELL, and what that means is English Language learners, and they are students whose primary or home language is other than English. And they need not only special language assistance, but they are often new to our country. They need to understand our culture, not only in the U.S., but also in Ohio, and also in Parma, and also in their building. So we have our title program, but we need to have a more specialized piece for our EL population. Currently, we have nothing that we have adopted in recent years. We have just been supplementing, and we need to do a better job. So that is why we are proposing this, and I will talk about how we are paying for it out of money that is earmarked towards our EL students. When we're talking about EL students, it's all about listening and speaking when they get here. When a student comes to us, the first thing that we have to do, one, is we always welcome our kids. We usually identify a peer model that can connect with that child. But we also have to test according to Ohio Department of Education. And we have to test to determine if they are considered a newcomer, a beginner in the language, or at that intermediate advanced level. And so we have to identify our English learners. We annually assess their performance, typically in February and March, per the state of Ohio. But monthly, we are progress monitoring our kids. We provide reasonable accommodations, and then we implement accountability systems that include long-term goals and measures of progress. So not only do our EL students have to, you know, adhere to all of our ODE mandates, but they also have EL standards connected to listening, speaking, writing, and reading. And the listening and speaking come first, and it takes a lot longer for that reading and writing to occur. We have Title III funds that come out of our federal funding, and it is geared for English learners. We are allowed to use this money towards language mentors. We have quite a few. We have translation services in eight different languages. We have curriculum and assessment materials that I'm proposing this evening, instructional supplies. I'm going to talk about an adaptive learning platform that we're using in our family engagement. We have approximately earmarked $91,806.82, and we strategically use that, and it's according to our population and our demographics. This is just a picture of where we're at in Parma. In 2021, K through 12, we had 371 students. 2122, we had 424. And as of today, we have 668 students. We have also increased our teachers. We are now proposing 15 teachers next school year, and there's a certain certification and licensure that is connected for teachers that are able to wrap around our English learner population. Our English learners, when they get here, they have six months before they would have to sit and take the Ohio State Test. So any of our students that came to us in the fall will be sitting and taking our Ohio State Test next week. That's not, that's not something I necessarily believe is the right thing to do, but we have to follow Ohio mandates. Where it counts on our report card is the gap closing for the first two years. When we get to year two, it counts in our performance index. And our performance index is, determines our stars for our achievement component on our state report card. I'm letting you know because it paints the picture, and I'm going to share some data along with how long it truly takes a newcomer that's learning English to perform at a proficient level on a state test. So when I'm talking about newcomers, it is students that come to us with absolutely no English, beginners. They have some English, an intermediate. They're fluent in English, but they need substantial support in that reading and writing. When we get to the intermediate level, we are really working on that reading fluency and reading comprehension. When we're at the newcomer and beginner level, it's that phonemic awareness that we talked about with our younger learners, the phonics and vocabulary. On average, it takes EL students 3.8 years to reach English proficiency. So you just heard me say that students new to the country, six months, get to sit for our state test in a couple weeks. They count for our gap closing, and then in two years, in the country, they count for our achievement component. It takes about, on average, 3.8 years to reach English proficiency. Another study indicates that oral proficiency takes three to five years to develop, and academic English proficiency can take anywhere between four and seven years. It all depends on some of the trauma that our students are witnessing and encountering when they get here. And so there's a lot that we do on top of academics with that social, emotional. I wanted to paint that picture for you so you understand where we're sitting with our population in Parma. We are proposing a block of time, K through 12. Tonight, it is only K through 8 because our high school folks are still looking at some materials. But we're looking at Frames for Fluency and Carousel of Ideas. Frames for Fluency is very similar to what we do in Title. However, the difference between Title and EL is remember, they're new to our country. So we have that whole culture piece. We have that whole comprehensive school piece, how to make friends, what it's like in the U.S. All of that is also taught to our English learners by our teachers on top of core curriculum. And this curriculum, it's a one-time purchase. It is hands-on materials that they will have in their classrooms. They, our teachers, will have the same exact materials, classroom sets for all three different levels, as mentioned. Our Carousel of Ideas is that listening and speaking component, and it takes a long time for that listening and speaking to occur before that reading and writing happen, which is different than our struggling readers that we talked about prior. So in this curriculum, we have materials to help model that behavior, provide ongoing guided practice, provide independent practice, and then delayed practice. Additionally, there's a connect component and a sale and soar. So connect is connecting to our current English block. So it takes whatever program that we have, and it takes all of those culture pieces and those skill pieces, and it ties it into the reading, listening, speaking, and writing and grammar skills of what our current program is. It promotes academic language development and writing skills so that we can prepare our kids for not only graduation, but also our state test. And then that sale and soar is for your higher-level EL students. And so newcomers, beginners, and intermediate, once they exit out of that intermediate level, we still progress monitor our students for up to two years because sometimes our students, once they're in the regular classroom setting, there are some gaps that continue to exist. So for both the literacy intervention and our EL support, we always have professional development that is connected, very similar to previous adoptions. It's that online, face-to-face, ongoing support so that our grade-level teams and departments can collaborate. It's one thing to purchase a program. It's another thing to practice, to get into each other's classrooms, to see exemplar teaching practices so that we can effectively bridge those gaps. So this is our funding. So for elementary Title I, we are using our permanent improvement money that's allocated for curriculum adoptions yearly, and that is roughly $47,989.60. For our special education, K through 8, cross-categorical classrooms, that is $53,416. Again, that's our PI. And then our English learners, K through 8, it's $132,062. For this particular one, our professional development is included. It is not an additional cost, and it is a one-time piece. So we have classroom materials that we can utilize for up to eight to 10 years. So we have classroom materials that we can utilize for up to eight to 10 years, possibly longer, because typically, our EL standards do not change much with that reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And so I want to be clear that our Title III is being used for the bulk of this because that is where that funding comes from, and then we will pick up the rest from PI. So we always have final considerations, and then I'll turn it over to you for questions. In all three categories, we had teacher leaders. For our EL population, myself and Mrs. McCaskey, we actually went to every single building and met with every single teacher and got an idea of what it's like in the life of their job, their day-to-day, as they're getting new students and what they need, and spent a lot of time talking and collaborating on top of researching how we could best support. We had materials out for our communities, and I demonstrated how we are practicing fiscal responsibility by looking at our rotation ahead of time and allocating those dollars a year in advance. So I know it's a lot of information. It's that time of the year, I'm sorry, but at this time, I will open it up to any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that very thorough presentation. It was a lot of information, but I can kind of sum this up. I appreciate the focus we have in our young readers, and we've really put forth a lot of effort and research and spending a little money to try to help our young readers. And that's really a focus that we've needed to have. I also appreciate working with our English lang- uh, ELL students. Yeah, that's got to be an arduous task, for sure, to try to catch those guys up and get them acclimated to the cultures of just the school, let alone the community and the Ohio and wherever else they may end up. So that's tough, and I appreciate the efforts that you guys have, and I know we have the right people in the right spot for that. So thank you. No questions, though.
I have some questions.
No.
I will say thank you also for this very comprehensive look at what we're doing with the reading programs. And I know we've had some shortcomings with our youngest readers, and to get them successful in school, that's what they need, you know? And so this looks like a great plan. You can tell there's a ton of work that went into it and time, and thank you, ladies, as well as your team of educators that worked on this as well, because it's clearly a lot of work and really important. I'm really interested in knowing more about the English language learners, the numbers that we have. And Dr. Strzok, you shared something at our curriculum meeting this week, and the information about how many we have here in our community.
Yeah. So where Parma is a hub for our Ukrainian refugees, at one point in time, and I want to make sure that I say this the right way, at one point in time, Parma was number three. It was New York, and then it was New York, Chicago, and Parma. But since then, they've clumped it together with the Cleveland metropolitan area, and we're number seven. So that's still very significant. And what we're hearing is that this new school year will be an even higher influx because we have families that are already here and established. So our families that are still over in Ukraine, dealing with the war and all the crisis and the chaos, they will be establishing stable housing with the families that are here. And oftentimes, it is 10 or 12 in a two-bedroom apartment. And so I say that because the families that are coming over, which we have our arms open to them, there's a lot that they are seeing in that country right now. So on top of the academic gaps and getting acclimated to this area in the country, we also have that social, emotional piece and that trauma that we will have to support, and we're prepared to support here in Parma.
Thank you. I'd like to know, I can't even imagine being a child of any age, but especially maybe a smaller child, younger child, coming in with no language skills and being left at school, and what does that day look like? How does, what does that look like for a child?
Well, we always assign some peer models, so typical peers that are their buddy. Our EL teachers, when they are first newcomers, they tend to spend more time with just our EL teachers. And then we slowly integrate into the classroom setting. There's a lot of translation that goes on. There's a lot of devices. There's a lot of time that is spent with making sure that our families are getting the correct information, which, when talking with our teachers, that is the part that is very hard, because right now, it's very hard to find translators that are willing and able to work in our school setting. And so we have a couple different options that we have been researching that are outside, certainly, of a curriculum adoption. But since we've had the refugee influx, there's more digital components that we are looking at for next year. But right now, we typically utilize, you know, we put in the paperwork for a translator. We use Google Translate. We do everything and anything possible. We're very lucky to have some folks that are EL teachers that also can speak Ukrainian, so that is very helpful. We have individuals at John Muir, at Greenbrier, and at Valley Forge specifically that can do that, along with some of our EL teachers that have that Arabic background as well. I would like more. I certainly want more. But, you know, the one thing I can say about Parma, and I'm a proud graduate, is it is such a loving environment. Our teachers wrap around our kids, and they love our kids just the way they are, and our families, they love our families just the way they are. So it is certainly hard. It's a hard transition. I'm not going to sugarcoat it, but we do have the supports that are in place with that EL teacher as that main teacher for quite some time, and then we slowly integrate along with that peer support.
Okay, great. I appreciate that, because that's, I'm just trying to picture this child and how we wrap our arms around him, you know, and help them to be learners here. And I think, I might have even asked this another time, you also connect family members that might not have English skills with those services for adults as well, correct?
Yeah, we're also working with our churches. We're working with Refugee Response. Our home liaisons do a phenomenal job of some of the pantry items, either food, clothing, passes, coupons. So we're constantly doing support outside of that academic piece.
Well, that's great. I had a couple more questions, but you answered them in the course of telling me about this other stuff, so I'll be done.
Okay.
But thank you for all of this.
Okay, real fast. I have a quick question. When she was asking her question, how many of the 668 students are elementary kids?
I have it up there.
Turn the thing.
I could show you. I broke it down, but now it's...
As usual, I ask a question that I don't...
It's okay.
I can read that. Are you kidding?
Yeah, but it's 668, and of the eight new students...
329.
I do not have what level they're in. I could get that for you.
That's right here, huh?
Yeah, 329.
329.
Yeah, there it is.
Yeah, but we have eight new students since I created this.
Well, I'm not worried about those eight, I was just thinking in general. And again, I ask a question that the answer's already right there.
That's okay.
Really good, Steve. All right. Jen, you say?
I just wanted to say what a great job. I happen to have dear friends that have taken Ukrainian children into their home, and they live in Parma Heights, and they're part of this, and to see this happening, and the churches give tremendous support at home versus in our school system as well, but what a great job. You're doing a great job, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. This has nothing, this is about the supplemental, not the EL stuff.
Okay.
We've already been piloting this in some of our schools this entire year. What percentage of the students have been utilizing this supplemental?
It's been four of our elementary buildings.
So it's four elementaries and then...
Of the students that, you know, say there's 50 kids, what percentage, you know, in that school, what percentage of those kids are needing this supplemental, is what I'm wondering.
It varies throughout the year. So at the beginning of the year, it's typically a little bit more, and then as the gaps are closing, it gets less. But right now, I mean, each school is different, so we just had our winter benchmark. So some of our elementaries were at the 55, 60% proficiency mark, whereas in some of our elementaries, we're only at 40%.
Now, is it because of this that got them...
We're seeing higher gains with this because our last program was adopted in 2014, and it was a blended model, and everything has shifted to structured. So yes.
And how does the supplemental differ from the Science of Reading that you were talking about? What is different about this than the core instruction?
So core instruction is where you're hitting all those components of reading all the time, every day. It's what all students, based on their grade-level standards. So a kindergartner going into a core reading class, they're receiving what every kindergartner is expected to receive, and that core teacher is tracking it based on that. 90-minute block, let's say, for reading. A kindergarten teacher spends a certain amount of time on those phonics skills, a certain amount of time on getting them to read, write, and discuss, where when we're talking this intervention program, this is where we're saying, these kids were struggling. They're not meeting that grade-level mark from that core instruction. So where are they struggling? They're struggling, let's say, a kindergartner in the phonemic awareness, which is the earliest type of literacy skill. So let's give them an intervention right there where they need it. That way, they can then go back to their classroom, and they should be able to continue to be able to bridge that gap. So the difference in this structured literacy or this program, Science of Reading is just how kids learn how to read. So this is being more purposeful, more intentional, and using data to drill down where that kid is lacking, and really thinking about, where's the gap? How am I making sure this kid is getting the specific intervention in that deficit so that when they are in class, trying to do everything all at once, they have the most success? And our intervention teachers, they're trained specifically to find those gaps and intervene with those gaps.
Okay. Because what I'm trying to is to see if maybe there was a problem with our core curriculum...
So that's a great point.
That's why we need this, because there's something wrong with our core curriculum, and maybe that should be changed when we get the opportunity, because what we're doing...
That's exactly on our plan, yeah.
Yeah, we're in year, it'll be, yeah, it'll be year five next year.
Can we just fire them? I mean, if it's not working, just say we don't want your stuff anymore?
It is working because...
No, it's not the teachers.
No, it is working because what we're doing is, with any curriculum, it's not the end-all-be-all. We're taking the standards, and we're creating a map, and then we're supplementing the gaps. So we do have one more year after next, and we're already looking at core curriculum. It's a pendulum. Eventually, it's going to move from structured back to blended. I'm just letting you know. It happens every seven to nine years. Right now, it's structured, so we just kind of roll with it.
All right. And when you said about, you know, about teaching the kids about the culture of Parma and all that, do you like show them vape shops and car washes or something?
No, we do not. That would not be appropriate.
Okay, good. Just making sure.
I saw you two were totally off. Go ahead, because I'll come up with a guess.
I actually, I just want to make a comment. I appreciate all this information for us, but also everybody that's listening, just because we do get beat up about the report card. And I think people look at the ranking, and that's it. They don't understand that, you know, maybe our district has a lot of different factors that other districts don't have, and I think that that's really useful information. We're kind of unique, like you already stated. Also, we're a lot larger. So I think that's really valuable to understand, that it's not just, it's not just a ranking. Like, there's so much that goes into that. So thank you for trying to work with all that.
Thank you.
One last question. I'm sorry. I'm always coming up with something.
Who's making it long now?
When will we, well, when will we see the results of this? I mean, is it year four or five of the program that we started? Are we going to see the results next year?
Well, we're hoping to see some good results with our OST testing that occurs in two weeks, and we'll have preliminary results, I believe, on or around May 17.
And that doesn't get reported until when, for our state?
I'll get to see it, but for the public, it'll continue to crunch all summer long, and then we'll get it typically the end of August, beginning of September.
Okay.
But we'll keep you informed.
Sorry, I'll let you go now. Thank you.
I was just joking.
It's all right. I think of things later.
Thank you.
Well, truly, somebody says something, and it spurs another thought and question.
Thank you both very much. The only other item I had, Mr. Vaughn, we had a very spirited town hall forum last night at the Parma Heights Library. Very grateful we had approximately 35 individuals participate in person, and certainly, we had our Facebook crowd as well. And I just enjoyed the energy in the room because we had a lot of passion on both sides of Issue Four, honestly. There were certainly people that spoke against, but there were also quite a few folks that had, you know, from the crowd, actually rebuttals to some of the things that the people who might have been, you know, against were saying. So because the timing of the monitor was not perfect, and that is no slight of the print shop, we just have the labor force that we have right now down there. Two of the town hall meetings occurred before the monitor came out. And so last night was actually the first town hall meeting that came out after the monitor, and we had such a great crowd, we thought, let's try this again in person. There certainly seems to be a demand and interest, which is exciting to us. So April 25th at 4:30 p.m., we will publicize this on social media as well. We will have another town hall. This will be at Parma Powers Library again. Parma Snow is like impossible to get. I really do try to spread around, but Parma Snow has just been booked every time we've looked. So April 25th at 4:30, and we look forward to, again, trying to answer everyone's questions so that we can make educated decisions about Issue Four.
Thank you. Can I add to the, before we go, well, that might be part of communications. Jack Christ, sir, you are my hero. I am so impressed with your speeches last night, and for you having the fortitude to be able to get up and go to that with what you're battling right now, that is outstanding. So...
Thank you.
Keep going. You're my hero, my man. All right, before I get all gushy, or more gushy.
It's like a Bette Midler song.
Yeah. So, communications, what we got?
I'm just going to piggyback on this town hall meeting from last night. Jack, you had great comments because you have such a great background in finance and treasury information that I think it was really wonderful to share that with the group last night because you're an expert in that, and they're learned from you, and I think that that was great. Sometimes, not sometimes, a lot of times, there's misinformation, disinformation out in the community. And I thank everybody that is attending these town hall meetings for coming out, asking us questions, wanting to learn more, regardless of what side they're on on the issue. And you can tell by listening to the people that did rebut some of the negative energy in the room, they have learned. They know, they understand a lot of why Issue Four is so important, and that's exciting to see. I knew some people in the room that had been anti-voters in the past, and they are absolutely committed to voting yes in May because they've learned. They've got the information. And so thanks to the people that come out and take the time to learn and understand, because this is complicated, all the changes that we're going through in our school district right now, and it is hard for a lot of folks to understand all the pieces and parts to it. But when they do, I find there's a lot of people that have a aha kind of moment where, oh my gosh, I didn't realize that, or I didn't understand that, or I didn't know that, and now it's more clear why this is being done. So they're great, and I invite everyone to please come out and participate. is being done. So they're great, and I invite everyone to please come out and participate with us. Okay, a little more on communications. Just want to mention what a nice, successful egg hunt we had at Byers Field on April first. What did we have, over thirty thousand eggs?
Yeah, thirty thousand eggs.
Out there, and several hundred people, happy little ones, and happy parents as well. They just had a lot of fun, didn't take long, but they had a good time, and it's a wonderful way for us to share one of our facilities again with the community, because this was open to everyone, not just Parma City School students. And I know there were people there that were not necessarily families that are in our school district. So that was great, and we enjoyed it. We did have some special guests there. There was the Easter Bunny, well dressed for the occasion, and Clifford the Dog showed up in his red regalia, and they were thrilling little ones throughout the Easter egg hunt. So that was a lot of fun as well. Thank you for reminding me of that, Mr. Vaughn.
You're most welcome.
Okay. Also, I'm going to mention PTA Founder's Night, celebrated ninety-six years of PTA in Parma Council, as well as, let me count it out, a hundred and twenty-six years of national PTA. So it was just a nice celebration, getting together with lots of folks that have PTA history, and to celebrate the advocacy and service that PTA has done for students and schools for many, many years. And just to follow up with a little more PTA stuff, we are winding down with scholarship season. It's been very busy the last couple of months with students filling out their applications, turning them in, having them evaluated. They are now in the process of assigning those scholarships to students, and they will soon find out if they are a recipient. And then we will have a big celebration next door in the Parma High School, or Parma Senior High Auditorium, with all of our sponsors and our scholarship recipients being awarded that evening, and then a little dessert reception in the cafeteria afterwards. So that's coming up soon. But we're close to finding out, putting a face to the name and a scholarship. And that's it for tonight.
Awesome. Thank you. Sean?
I don't have anything.
Thank you.
Do you have something?
No, I was thanking Sean for that.
Absolutely. I was like, all right, cool. No, no participation things today, so that's awesome. So no amendments? All right, time to rock and roll here. I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one four six, approval of the written record of the proceedings on March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, regular Board of Education meetings.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one four six. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Christ?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one four six has been approved. Brings us to curriculum, Mrs. Bratz.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of resolution two thousand twenty-three zero four one four seven, approval of overnight, out-of-state, out-of-country field trips.
Second. We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one four seven. Any question or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Christ?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one four seven has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three zero four one four eight, authorization agreement for assessment software subscriptions for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year.
Second. We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one four eight. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Christ?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one four eight has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three zero four one four nine, authorization to enter into an agreement with Mindfully LLC for school-based services program.
Second. We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one four nine. Any questions or comments from the board?
What exactly is Mindfully, where they do?
This is mental health services. It's replacing an agency that actually we had been working with. And there is no cost to the district. This is students would bill through insurance.
I know. Does this also deal with the dyslexia thing that's coming from the state?
No, this is specifically mental health.
I think that's coming.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Christ?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one four nine has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution two thousand twenty-three zero four one five zero, authorizing purchase of student support materials for early literacy intervention and English learners.
Second. We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five zero. Any questions or comments from the board? I would think there would be none. Ms. Nucio?
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Christ?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five zero has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss regarding curriculum, that will conclude for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Bratz. I appreciate that. Business, Mr. Ruda?
Yes, I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five one, authorizing award of bid for Parma Senior High School and the Parkview Building abatement and demolition.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five one. Any questions or comments from the board?
I am just, I just hate that we, I'm so mad at the state of Ohio for this. I would just love to give them a family-friendly, double-barrel medal to, you know what I mean? This is, makes me mad.
Family-friendly?
Politicians did this. That's it.
Okay. Sorry about that. Can I just add, this went through, you know, extensive legal proceedings. There's very specific Ohio revised code and specifications on how you work through this process, and we worked with our attorneys as well to craft a very tightly tailored bid process. We are coming in far under what we estimated, which is great for our permanent improvement funds. We had publicly stated, we thought four to four and a half million, and now between the two demolitions, which is this and the next one that you'll vote on, we're at about three point five million. So good news for our permanent improvement fund.
Absolutely. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ruda?
Excuse me. Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Christ?
I have to comment. In my forty-six years of public service...
Go ahead. Oh, is it?
Go ahead.
It is just, it is just the most difficult vote I've ever made in my life. My vote is yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five one has been approved.
Sorry about that, big guy.
Sorry.
Oh, I know how he feels.
Yeah, we all feel the same.
All right, I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five two, authorizing award of bid for Renwood Elementary School abatement and demolition.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five two. Any questions or comments from the board?
Same as the last one.
Same as the last one. You okay there, Mr. Christ?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Christ?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five two has been approved.
All right, I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five three, authorizing purchase of Chromebooks.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five three. Any question or comments from the board? Certainly a little easier as it goes down now, everybody. No questions? Nucio?
Mr. Ruda?
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Christ?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five three has been approved.
Okay, I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five four, authorizing the sale of obsolete MacBooks.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five four. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, how would somebody go about getting one if they, you know, for this?
This is for staff. In all honesty, we've had some requests from folks like PTA members, and so we are going to have a conversation about that in terms of availing them. I do want to, before we go through that process, though, be very clear in that these are obsolete for a reason. Many are, they've slowed down considerably in their processing speeds. They are no longer able to be updated, because Apple's an absolute genius business model, and they stop sending out updates once a device has reached a certain age. So I don't want folks to have false hope, but we will have this conversation, because I think it is fair to our public, who ultimately purchased these, that they should potentially have the same chance that our staff members have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Christ?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five four has been approved.
All right, I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five five, authorizing agreement for telephone services.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five five. Any questions or comments from the board?
I can comment. Our telephones, like many MacBooks, are also becoming obsolete. Mrs. Bratz asked me to research how many of our phones in our district are phones that we will retain after this transition, and the answer is only about fifty. And you can imagine all the classrooms and offices that we have throughout the district, it's a very small percentage. The good news of this is that while there's an upfront cost, the long-term expense of the district will decrease by approximately thirty thousand dollars per year because of the new service. So it's an upfront cost, but in the long term, it pays for itself.
Thank you. Ms. Nucio?
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Christ?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five five has been approved.
All right, I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five six, authorizing purchase of telephones.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five six. Any question or comments from the board? Mr., Dr. Smile, just tag along with the other one.
Yeah, exactly. And actually, I hadn't read through the entire resolution, but now we know. There's a thousand fifty phones, and only fifty of them are actually retainable. So very small percentage.
Great. Okay, roll call, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Christ?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five six has been approved.
There are no other business items this evening, so unless another board member has something to discuss, this concludes business.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda. Job well done. This brings us to finance. Mr. Christ?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh four dash one five seven, resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies, and certifying them to the county fiscal officer.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five seven. Any questions or comments from the board?
I was going to ask Sean to explain this. That's why I forgot to second it. I was looking at Sean.
Now is a good time to do that.
Mr. Christ seconded it?
Yes, he did. Oh, no, Mrs. Bratz seconded it.
Mrs. Bratz seconded it.
Okay, so this is, this is a resolution we do every year, and the county auditor always, they can change the rate, they can increase the millage or decrease the millage with emergency levies. This year, they decided to keep all the emergency levies the same rates, which I thought they would decrease because property values went up, but they decided to keep it the same. So we're just approving the rates that they set.
Is it a good thing or a bad thing? It's an okay thing?
It's an okay thing. We've got the same amount of money regardless of the rates changed.
Yeah, remember, House Bill nine twenty freezes the amount that we will collect on an emergency levy. So sometimes it'll just, you know, downward if property values went way up, which is why we anticipated actually a downward trend in the millage. But we don't work in that office, and that's what they came up with, so.
I just wanted to make sure the public understood, saying, authorizing the necessary tax levies. This isn't anything new that we're...
It's not new tax, it's just the rates that the county has determined are appropriate.
That was a good call there. Excellent. So roll call, Ms. Nucio?
Mr. Christ?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five seven has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh four dash one five eight, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five eight. Any question or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nucio?
Mr. Christ?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five eight has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh four dash one five nine, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five nine. Any question or comments from the board? And of course, I thank everybody for donating. It's very generous and very thoughtful of you to keep us in mind at Parma City Schools when you donate. There's, I'd have read a pretty big one. The Shiloh PTA there was a paper number.
That was a Parma, the last one?
Yes. Parma PTA also for the trip for the kids. That's very generous of you. Thank you so much. Anybody else?
No, thank you.
Roll call, Ms. Nucio?
Mr. Christ?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one five nine has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Christ. Job well done. Brings us to legislation, Mrs. Bratz.
I have nothing this evening.
Have a complaint.
Wow.
So moving on, human resources, Mr. Christ.
Move on, move on.
Yes, I move to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh four dash one six zero, approval of the following certificated exhibits, confirmation of certificated appointments, confirmation of certificated replacements, confirmations of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, confirmation of supplemental contracts, confirmation of substitute teacher appointments, approval of the, of certificated, non-compensated leave of absence, acceptance of certificated resignations.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one six zero. Any question or comments from the board? I, for one, am just glad I don't have to read this whole thing. Ms. Nucio?
Mr. Christ?
Once you get past certificated, it's not bad. Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one six zero has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash oh four dash one six one, acceptance of certificated retirements.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-three dash zero four dash one six one. Any question or comments from the board? Mr. Bell, congratulations. And Mrs. Morris, congratulations. Hope to see you later this spring. Yeah. So roll call, Ms. Nucio?
Mr. Christ?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-04-161 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-04-162, recommendation for continuing contracts for 2023 to 2024.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution 2023-04-162. Any question or comments from the board? Congratulations to this list of people. I'm not going to read everybody's name, but congrats. That's a good thing to get. Roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-04-162 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-04-163, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments and replacements, confirmation of change of classified assignments, confirmation of classified resignations, acceptance of classified administrative resignations, and approval of classified stipend.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution 2023-04-163. Any question or comments from the board? Roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-04-163 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-04-164, acceptance of classified retirements.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution 2023-04-164. Any question or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2023-04-164 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2023-04-165, confirmation of classified administrative appointments and replacements.
Second.
We have a motion as second to adopt resolution 2023-04-165. Questions or comments from the board?
I'd love to provide some background on both of these ladies. First of all, I'm sorry that they had to sit through about four different socially appropriate times to leave. They didn't win that jackpot, so they've been here the entire two hours. We appreciate your patience, ladies. First is Brittany Henry. Brittany Henry will be in a position that's really a lead home liaison. She has been a home liaison with us this year at Densler, and she has performed extremely highly. Densler now has had two very high-performing home liaisons and is losing both of them, but her service will still be in the district, and we're very grateful for that. She has also worked as a program manager for Help Me Grow, and before that, she worked with AmeriCorps where she was a youth advocate. We are really looking forward to her leadership of all of our home liaisons throughout the entire district, and I know that she really impressed the interview committee with a lot of assertiveness and leadership capabilities, and, and we really think she can take the performance of our home liaisons to another level. So, welcome, Brittany. Do you want to say just a couple of words?
Um, sure. Um, I think in my professional and personal experience, this is a full circle moment for me. I understand the quality of education and most supports and resources can really provide resilience or opportunities for individual special children, so I'm excited and honored for this position. And I'm going to do a very good job.
Nice, that was off the cuff, too. I didn't even give her a heads up, but she was. Well done.
Very good. Well done. Thank you and welcome.
The second is, is Carrie Nagorka. Now, this would go with our mantra of, we do not just fill positions to fill them, we make sure that we have folks that really are exciting to us in terms of becoming assets to the district, not just folks that, you know, fill a role. And Carrie comes to us most recently from MJH Life Sciences, which I didn't even know it exists, but it's in North Olmsted, and it's a very impressive company, and she's handled the senior editor position for their publications. So, we're very impressed by that. Before that, and that's why we're, we're very excited as well, she has extensive work in our local media. She was a content and multi-platform producer for Channel 5 for 15 years, and then she became a senior content and planning producer for Channel 19 and 43 for another seven years. So, we're really impressed with her wide range of, of media experience and, and very excited for what she'll bring. Now, I also want to embarrass her slightly because she's not only an impressive professional, but clearly an impressive mother as well. She lives in the district. Her daughter Sophie is a sixth grader, honor student at Greenbrier, and her daughter Scarlett is in 10th grade at Valley Forge, where she ranks 11th in her class. So, very excited to welcome a Parma parent to our, our staff and our leadership team. And Carrie, you want to say a few words?
Sure. Well, he pretty much said everything. I've been in Parma for 18 years and have watched my kids come up through the ranks at Pleasant Valley, Greenbrier, Mount Valley Forge, have loved all the teachers they've dealt with, have been as involved as I can, and working in the media, have done everything I can to let the Clevelander viewing audience know how great Parma School District is, and I look forward to continuing to do that in this role.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.
So, hopefully you'll approve both ladies now that we've introduced, now that we have a vote on you.
Exactly. I kind of got that backwards. So, roll call, please, Ms. Nusio.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwark?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
I was going to do the same thing, but you got, that's yours today. Yes, resolution 2023-04-165 has been approved. Welcome, ladies.
And as a special welcome, now would be a socially appropriate time if you would like to depart. I really am grateful that you stayed through.
Actually, we only have five more minutes.
Feel free to excuse yourselves.
All right, thank you.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss this night, tonight, this concludes Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis. Job well done. That was very lengthy today. Policies, Mrs. Schwark?
I move to adopt resolution 2023-04-166, approval of the following revised policies.